The Committee of the Whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for June 14th, 2023 to order. Will the Court please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon.
Present.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Powell. Brashenberger.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 24th, 2023.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court please call them.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved at zero. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The first item this evening is a presentation from Neighborhood Services Director Jennifer Phillips and Public Works Director Erin Neal. This is, they're going to be talking about the project timeline for the new trash collection recycling pickup and organics composting contract that will be beginning in January 2025. The city's current waste hauler contract expires at the end of next year, that's 2024, and staff will be introducing a survey to collect resident feedback on current and future uses of curbside waste, recycling, and organics collection. The data collected through the survey will be guiding the creation of the request for proposals for trash collection, recycling, pickup, and organics composting, again as I said, beginning in January 2025. Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Neal and Ms. Phillips.
We'll take any questions after that great introduction. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us out tonight. Rick, thank you for getting this on the agenda. Following up on what Rick said, we are here 18 months in advance of the beginning of our new solid waste recycling and organics contract for the community, for the city of Elgin. There's a couple of things I want to touch on as we get into this, is that we are being very specific in the WRO kind of headline of our new contract, Waste Recycling and Organics. Our previous contract was waste recycling and yard waste, and we have had some success, and we know that there's a community desire to include food scraps into the waste stream, so we are, first things first, being very aware of the name of this contract and including organics, which is kind of encompassing both yard waste and food scraps. So that was very intentional. This evening, I'm going to be going over that 5,000-foot overview of where we're at, where we've been, what we've been doing, and where we're going. I'm going to turn it over to Director Phillips, and Jenny is going to talk about the survey that has been created and is ready to be launched tomorrow, but we wanted to have a discussion with the council before we did so. So let's hop right into it. In June, about five, three and a half years ago, three years ago, we were here in front of the council, and we extended our current agreement with Waste Management for another five years. During those discussions and through that extension, we were able to get some additional services out of our existing contract. One was a rate freeze in 2020, if you recall. One was the inclusion of a senior program for reduced rates for seniors, and a third was to finally launch the organics program to the community that which allowed residents to receive a third curbside bin, as well as be able to put yard waste and food scraps in there. So we piloted both of those programs, and we've been monitoring them. What have we been doing? So since the new agreement went into effect on January 1st, 2020, we have been monitoring those services, and Jenny, myself, and towards the latter half of this time, our sustainability analyst, Michaela Larson, has been helping work us to this point. And what is this point? We are in the point right now, we're in the process of creating an RFP. We're about four months away from the creation of the RFP. The survey that will be going out here shortly is going to very much help guide us, as we, the first thing we need to do is seek input from the community. So that's what we're here to talk about today. We're going to create the RFP in the fourth quarter of 2023. We're going to release the RFP early first quarter of 2024, with a closing period sometime probably March or April. That's our plan now. We will have a review period where we review the request for proposals, and it is our goal in 12 months from now, in June of 2024, to be back in front of you with a recommendation to approve the new contract terms, which begin January 1st, 2025. So we are still under contract, I know there's been some, some talk about that, but we're still under contract now for the next 18 months with Waste Management, our current service provider. So we've built ourselves some time into this program so that we can engage the community, we can engage the council, we can create an all-encompassing RFP document, and go through that process to select a new vendor. We'll have six months, the goal is to have six months on the back end, from June of '24 to December of 2024, to make any implementation changes if we were to happen to change waste and recycling vendors, if we're going to keep the existing vendor, and make sure that everyone's on the same page with any of the new service options that are being provided to them. So that's the overview. I'm going to hand it over to Jen, who's going to discuss the survey that we have been working on and that is ready to be pushed into the community as soon as tomorrow.
Good evening. Thank you, Erin, and thank you, everyone, for this opportunity this evening. So I am here to present to you on the 2023 community survey and the timeline that is before us, and the things that we've been doing leading up to today's events. So in January of 2023, thank you for allocating funds to allow us this opportunity to consult with the third-party vendor on ways in which we can craft this survey and meet the goals of the organization to seamlessly put this survey out into the community. So what we ended up doing, you know, when we had these conversations in 202019, when we were here before you in 202019, we took that feedback, and we didn't wait till this funding was allocated in January. Erin, myself, and Michaela have been doing our due diligence since that point, gathering information, meeting with our current service providers, and looking in ways that we can continuously improve the service delivery to the community of Elgin. So what we know is what we know. We know the things that we need as an organization for our business models, the things that we use, our, our provider for special events, public services, those types of things, but what we're really drilling down in this survey is what are the needs of our community members. This survey is about the community itself. So when we were creating the survey, we wanted to have a survey that was inclusive of our community and inclusive of the community needs, creating a survey that was designed to solicit feedback from our community members who are serviced by the curbside toters that you see out in the community weekly, in ways in which we could interact with them on a higher level regarding waste, recycling, and organics, and most importantly, what their desires as community members are moving forward as we go through this exercise. So with the allocation of the funds in February of 2023, we needed to verify that what we were seeing as staff members were in line with other surveys that you would see out in the greater world. And so we consulted with an organization called PaleBlue.LLC. PaleBlue.LLC came to our attention under a recommendation and a reference from the King Company Sustainability Commission. PaleBlue.LLC is out of Minnesota, and they've done similar, like I had mentioned, surveys that are out in the world, so we, we were entrusting on them to guide us through this process. PaleBlue.LLC is known for being the leading experts in carbon climate change, sustainability, and renewable energy planning, so the fit seemed to be perfect for us here in the city. So PaleBlue.LLC has been guiding the staff here to go through this process and create this survey. We should also mention that not only will they have, they worked with us on this survey creation, they will be reporting back to us the survey results. So that is a huge part of the consulting agreement with PaleBlue.LLC, is that they're going to take these survey results and be able to present the survey results in a report to staff and for council's review. So one of the other important things that we did as staff members is we asked PaleBlue.LLC, under the consulting agreement, "We need you to come to a Sustainability Commission meeting, a city of Elgin meeting." So PaleBlue.LLC was at a sustainable meeting on May 11th, and from that meeting, well, the goal for them going into the meeting was to say, "Hey, is staff's questions in line with the Sustainability Commission's goals when it comes to the Commission's objectives about recycling, organics, and refuse disposal here in our community?" So it's very important to solicit some information from the team and the Sustainability Commission before we finalize the survey. From that discussion on May 11th, we were able to add three additional questions to the survey. So it was extremely advantageous that we were at that meeting. That brings us to what is happening tomorrow. So tomorrow, on June 14th, we'll be launching the community survey. We will be emailing the city council tomorrow morning with the links and the QR code so that you have them available. The team in the city manager's office will be doing a social media campaign tomorrow as well to share this information. It is also important to highlight that because this is specific to our curbside collection users, we will be pushing out postcards in the U.S. Postal Service mail to the 31,054 homes that are impacted by the contract. So that way, we're getting in their mailboxes, we're getting in their inboxes in many different avenues, because again, the survey is about their feedback. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the postcards that are going in the home, are going to the homes, will be both in English and Spanish, and the landing page of the survey is both in English and Spanish, and for those who have additional language needs, the Google translation page on the website landing page will meet any language needs that are needed. So when we push out the survey tomorrow, we're going to leave the survey open until August 1st. That will give us additional opportunities to push out information on social media for the team in 3-1-1 to share that the survey is out there and encourage participation. At the end of the survey in August, we are going to allocate that time for PaleBlue.LLC to do the magic and get all of the reporting needs met for the organization, and that would then guide us to what some of the additional needs for the RFP creation would be. And again, the report summary from PaleBlue.LLC will include key findings, response summaries, and metrics, which are going to be very important in the outcome here, an appendix of information that will include long and short-form answers from the residents that complete the survey. And then, as Erin mentioned, the end result is, let's create this RFP the fourth quarter of this year so that we are able to seamlessly get the RFP out for bids in the first quarter of the next new year. I also wanted to present to you tonight a kind of a high-level overview of what the survey is going to experience would be for a respondent who's taking the survey. So as you can see on the upper corner of that slide, the page is going to be cityofelgin.org/WROsurvey, and that information again will be in your inboxes tomorrow morning. So the experience that a resident should have is that the survey takes, you know, around seven minutes to complete. It's 21 questions, again, with the help of our Sustainability Commission and PaleBlue.LLC, three of those questions were recently included in the survey. So what we are looking for is residents of curbside collections to submit their survey results to us. We are going to ask for an email address and a ZIP code. The ZIP code will help us break down where in the community we're getting these respondents from. Importantly, right at the beginning of the survey, we are looking for levels of satisfaction and any levels of dissatisfaction they have with current services. We will move then into ranking of sustainability practices, the interest in waste reduction, sustainability practices, service options, and cost per home. What is the priority? We're going to ask about recycling practices. Do you recycle? What do you recycle? How do you recycle? Preferences in recycling services. We've also included a question on the survey about how one would recycle their plastic grocery bags. We're interested in capturing that information as well. Organics, as Erin has mentioned, this is the, the change for us internally. This is something that is a priority for us. Do you participate in organics collections? Would you participate in organics collections? And organics being, being food scraps. What are those preferences, considering toters and cost? And if you're not participating, what are those barriers? So that we can understand participation levels. We'll ask about bulk item collections and the refuse stickers that are needed for those services weekly. We're going to hit on electronics and hazardous household waste. Do our residents participate in the frequency of those services used? We're going to do an overview of the toter sizes, are the toter sizes, do they meet your needs? Are they too big? Are they too small? Are they just right? Are the toters meeting your needs? We're also going to ask the residents, towards the end of the survey, how do they interact, engage with the city when they need information from us about waste recycling and organics collection? What are their engagement preferences with the city? And at the conclusion of the survey, there will be an opportunity for the resident to provide us with any additional comments, which will be captured in the final report from PaleBlue.LLC. So I know it's a quick few slides, but we just wanted to kind of give you a high-level overview of where we have been in the last few years, where we're going, and what the next steps are in our action plan. So we will open the floor to questions.
Any questions for Ms. Phillips or Mr. Neal? Mr. Ortiz?
For the RFP, how many weeks you guys can leave it open for, or how many days?
Well, right now-
Well, I mean, honestly, Councilman, we haven't gotten to that point yet. It'll be open for likely a month to six weeks at a minimum, but we still have some research to do to see what is the best practice for leaving a RFP for these services in a community our size open so that we get back the necessary responses, but we're simply not at that point yet.
Okay. And then I scanned your QR code while you had it up, and under "who should take this survey," it says "single-family residents." We have some multifamily structures in the city, so should we reword that to say "residents of Elgin," or do you only want single-family homes taking the survey?
There are some multifamily stops in our community that are provided dumpster services. There are 14 different locations that are provided dumpster services under the contract terms. What we're looking to capture is services that are provided using the toters. It's not asking for a parcel address, so we would not be excluding anyone for giving their feedback on any, on any of those speaking points on the survey.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Can you go back to where the QR code was? Thanks. I had a couple of questions. Thanks for being here. Appreciate the presentation, and I'm assuming when we go to the QR code, we'll see the full survey.
As of right now, you'll see the landing page for the survey. The survey will be opened at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow, so the survey, there is not currently access to the survey.
Okay. So I guess, without seeing the actual survey questions, I'm not comfortable, like, saying yea or nay. It would be helpful to maybe at least have till the end of the week if we saw the survey questions and were able to give staff feedback. It looks like there's enough time built into your timeline to do that. I just know personally from my involvement with the program over the years and doing this on a day-to-day basis, these, I mean, this is one of the core services, as you all know, that people rely on in our community. There are some concerns I have about not including questions to the multifamily properties. I guess my question would be, is the intent to continue to include the multifamily properties that are serviced with dumpsters in the program moving forward, or not? So I think it currently includes like up to five units.
It does.
It is. It's, it's five, five units or less. Anything more is your bigger contractor.
Okay. So I appreciate that. That answers a question. The other question I had was, do we have data that you can, I mean, I don't expect you to have that right now, but I'd be interested in some data on the usage of the At Your Door program, and seeing how our waste and recycling volumes, including yard waste, have trended over the, the contract term. Are we trending up? Are we trending down? That would be helpful to know, you know, what direction we're going in. I'm not sure if some of that information was shared with the Sustainability Commission when you guys were, when you met with them. I think you're doing a great job in terms of getting ahead of the game, because we're a large community. This is a major RFP. It's going to take some time and, and being smart working through it. I will caution that taking out even just those few multifamily units could impact the pricing for the rest of the community. But if that's the desire of, of staff and of the, the council, I remember Mr. Rage not being happy, but I think there might be opportunities to restructure how we bill for those multifamily units instead of just taking them completely out of the program. One of the things I'm most interested in seeing from the survey is, on average, how many stickers are people buying every week, and what are they buying those stickers for? Are they buying them for trash? Are they buying, buying them for bulk items? Are they buying them for yard waste? I know you get data from Waste Management on how many stickers are sold overall, but I would be curious to hear, you know, rather than us taking that number in aggregate and dividing it amongst, you know, the number of households just to get an average, I'd be really interested in hearing from residents, "Hey, how many stickers you buy, are you buying every week? Is it two? Is it five?" Because when you add up those costs plus what they're paying currently on their, on, on their water bill, that cost can be pretty significant. So I, I really want us to look at that, because I know we have like a, what is considered a modified volume-based program where there's a base service that's provided to residents, and then anything over and above that, people buy stickers for. But I've seen communities kind of moving away from some of those programs and going with more of a take-all system that, in a lot of instances, can be more equitable for folks, especially depending on the demographics of your community. But also, I mean, I understand, there's a sustainability component, too, that we're trying to encourage people to reduce waste and to recycle. So yeah, it, it's, it's two different competing interests, but I, I would be interested in getting the data, the right, making sure we're asking the right questions so that we're getting the right data for people to move forward in, in a way that makes sense for our community.
So this is a two-part question. I'll answer first, and I'll let Jenny chime in from the service delivery standpoint. So sticker services within the community, yes, we do receive the aggregate report from Waste Management monthly, quarterly, and annually. In 2022, we sold 209,000 yard waste stickers at approximately $3, $3 apiece. That's $600,000 in revenue that is made, based on the user who's using it. What we do know is that we have, we still have issues with vendors. So there's certain things that are outside of our control, even as, as the folks who are administering the contract. And one of those things Jenny and I have seen over the years is our vendors no longer willing to sell the stickers, all right? I mean, it used to be an attraction to say, "Hey, we sell yard waste stickers. It gets more people through the door," and then they may buy something else while they're in the store. We've seen a considerable amount of that. We've dealt with Vaughn Kushner and Waste Management about, a couple Walgreens in town who said this, "We're simply not selling them anymore. We're not going to put them into our SKU system." And then that kind of leaves us with, how do we provide stickers to the community? We've had, just as recently as this week, we had a call into the 3-1-1 call center. There was a mom-and-pop store in Elgin on the west side, and the resident said, "According to your website, the stickers cost $3.36 apiece. The store is selling them for $4 apiece. Is that okay?" It's not. You know, so there are some inequities that are out of our control. Can we go in there and shut them down from sales of our stickers? Absolutely, but then that's one less store. We don't want them selling them above market value, but now that's one less store that's selling, selling us stickers. From a sustainability standpoint, Councilwoman, we've received reports from Waste Management that because people don't want to buy stickers, they're tucking their yard waste into their waste bins, into the recycling bins at the bottom. One of the goals of the Sustainability Commission is a 30%, 30% reduction in yard waste materials in the waste stream. So one of the things that we did not want to specifically ask through the survey, because we wanted to be open, we didn't want to be guiding, was, you know, "Do you think sticker prices are too high?" 100% of respondents are going to say yes, sticker prices are too high. What we did include in the survey is, how often do you use bulk service? Are you putting bulky items out once a week, once a month, every six months, every year? Is the size of your container, your waste container, is it big enough for you? Is it, is it too big, or is it just small? So without asking specifically questions around stickers, we are going to be able to extract data based on the survey without asking, "What do you think about the sticker program?" If we put that question in the community, Councilwoman, you know, people would say, "They're too expensive." So there are questions in the survey that are going to allow us to take the raw data that's provided to us by Waste Management, as well as extract based on the data that does come in that says, "Okay, you are using yard waste services. You're using them twice a month." We ask, "Are you using it during the free time of the year? Are you using it during the month of April when it's free, and then October and November when it's free?" Those questions are there to help us without specifically asking about stickers, because we know, we believe that we may be at the point where stickers are no longer a thing in Elgin. We haven't come to that conclusion. We do want to use the survey to help us get there, but we feel the same way you feel about the stickers that are in the community currently.
Right. And to kind of chime in on that as well, as Erin mentioned, we don't, we didn't want to lead, lead someone through the survey and say, "Oh, yeah, that, that's too expensive," or, or kind of guide how we thought that they should respond based on what we were seeing over the last several years, because again, this is, is not about us, right? It's about the community and the, and the community that we serve. But I can also say, too, that when we get this data and we get this report from PaleBlue.LLC, that doesn't mean that that is, "Okay, now we're ready to go and put this RFP together." We certainly can pivot. I mean, if we need to put out an additional survey perhaps at the pleasure of council, some community engagement sessions that we have done for various different programs, whatever the- whatever the needs are, we have, we have that built into our timeline so that we're not just, okay, it's September, we've got our results, here's what we have. If there's something that just doesn't, you know, jive with you, doesn't jive with the things that we see, then we certainly can course correct. I also have the privilege of seeing things when it comes to refuse stickers from the community development code perspective. So, some of the barriers that we see in our low to moderate income neighborhoods is that $3.36 for that sticker may be the cost difference for a gallon of milk. And that's a very sensitive topic for all of us, that, you know, we want to feed our children, get these things out in the community, and if we could do something to take that burden away, but still provide high levels of service to the community, and still focus on sustainability, I think we would be remiss to not include that in our thought process.
I appreciate that, and I definitely am not looking to lead folks, you know, in questions, but I think specifically asking certain things and how they are worded, because I know, just for example, you said, you know, how many bulk items do you put out a week? That's very different than, how many stickers do you normally purchase for bulk items? And how many stickers are you purchasing a week? Because just to what Ms. Phillips said, that is a concern. And when you add that up, if people are purchasing stickers for, they're a little bit over $3 a sticker now, they're purchasing two stickers a week, that adds up over the course of a month. And, I mean, they could be close to, what, $30 a month for garbage service? That's higher than what other communities are paying in this area. So, I know, I personally like to see the survey before it's released and provide some feedback. I don't know about the rest of the council, because I think it would, I'd rather provide that feedback before it goes out versus it go out and then we go back and try to add some stuff to it. You might still have to do that, but I thought that's what we were going to see tonight. I thought we were going to see the actual survey. So, that's my feedback.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. To me, I understand what you're saying. I think it makes sense because there's a difference between how many are sold and how many are used, okay? And how do you use it? I think those things are important. Because I, for one, am a person who buys so many at a time. Do I use them right away? Maybe not, you know, maybe it'd be two years before I run out with what I bought. Maybe I lose them and I have to buy more, you know, I don't know. But I think that's important, that's the comment that I want to make right now. The second comment is, when you said what we were trying to accomplish with the first one, one of them caught my eye, was reduced rate for seniors. Okay. I never, I never saw any savings, maybe I missed it, but was that worth doing? What was the number on that? Out of how many seniors? Because does it matter what their income is, or how does that work? If you can explain that to me.
Yeah, so, that's a, it's a very subjective question, Councilwoman, but currently, we have 59.
Really? That's all.
Senior citizens. And there is a threshold, it's a low-income threshold that has to be met. We have 59 seniors out of the 31,100 homes in Elgin participating in this program. Now, does that mean that it doesn't work? No, that means that when we inserted it into the extension agreement in 2019, which began in 2020, that we didn't have the autonomy to make it work, we had to make it work within the parameters of our existing agreement. We don't think that that program, or at least that offering, should not be vetted out more, should not be possibly included as a bid alternate into our RFP. But as it sits today, on June 14th, we have 59 senior citizens participating in that program.
Okay. What I kind of understand from this as well is, there are some people who may recycle a lot, there's some people like me that takes probably about a month before I fill it up, so I just take it out once, but I get it, the trucks still have to go by there, you know, I understand that. And the fact that I know for condos or townhouses, you give the choice of either a large toter or a small toter, I think that's nice, because even though a person lives in a condo, they might want the larger one, but to give people that choice, I think that's important. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Stefan.
Yeah, I'll take us all and step on the third rail, I guess. Is the leaf breakout program part of this? Are we going to consider that? Are we going to review it?
That's a great question, Councilman. It is not going to be included in the survey. Those services will be included as they are currently included in our contract as an add-on service. So, what we pay currently to Waste Management, our current vendor, is an hourly rate for their services during the six weeks we collect leaves. It's not a contractual obligation that we have to continue that service, it's an add-on that we pay for outside of the pass-through cost that is the waste and recycling and organics. So, we would likely, unless we hear otherwise from the council prior to the release of the RFP, we would likely include a provision in the RFP that suggests the leaf breakout program still exists, and that we may put a sunset clause on it that says, you know, at any time within, you know, 30 days' notice, the City of Elgin can, you know, officially cancel this program and it's no longer included in the agreement. But as it stands right now, that program would be included within the RFP and to be included within the price that is provided to the city.
And just, thanks, just follow, because we're not, it's not part of the survey, so I assume the format would remain the same, which is the intent is to just have it as a pass-through. Whatever it costs us, we just charge those houses and pass it through, okay? Because it is a big part of, certainly the organics part, and so, maybe now's the time to look at that too. Okay, just thinking about it.
Just to follow up on Mr. Stefan's comment about a pass-through, that anything we look at is going to be a pass-through cost, this is not a revenue source for the City of Elgin. And people get, new people move to town and think that it's something that the city makes money on, and we don't necessarily do that.
Right.
It's all just pass-through for us. And the leaf pickup is a classic example, we've talked about, Ms. Powell and I have talked about that for a long time. Not too much in favor of it, but we understand that people like that. One issue, and this goes back to my time here, that people are willing to pay for things that they use, but they start having a problem when they pay for something else that they don't use. So, that's where it kind of gets, where we get pushback from the residents, and they get upset. We try to do the best that we can do, and people say, how come I have to pay the same as the guy up the street, and his garbage container is mounted full? And I have a little bit in the bottom. I said, I get that, and we go through the whole thing with Vaughn Kushner, who's a very patient man, and we do whatever you want to do, but you have to pay for it.
Yeah, I have two voicemails in my inbox currently that were forwarded to my attention from 311 regarding residents who live within on-street leaf pickup areas, who do not have trees in their yard, and they want to know how they opt out of the program. And there is no opt-out. I mean, within our community program, there is a community program. So, if you live within the boundaries of an on-street leaf breakout area, you are billed $5 in additional a month, which is $60 a year, towards the cost of the on-street leaf breakout program. So, you know, I have two calls in my inbox now for residents who, you know, I don't have a tree, why do I have to pay for the service? And the answer is, well, you're part of the community program, you know, that's, we don't have a way to opt them out of the program. It's a community rate, so.
Yeah, just because they don't have a car doesn't mean they don't have to pay for some plowing.
Correct. Okay. Any else? Ms. Roche, do you have a go?
Hi, thanks a lot. One thing I want to say is, we, this was just a topic at the Sustainability Commission, that the multi-unit apartment buildings that use their own haulers, many of them don't provide recycling, and that is a, that is part of the recycling statutes at county level, and that we don't enforce. And I think that's something we should think about, there are many people in our community don't recycle at all. And that's, this is not directly to do with that, but on the whole general thought-talk of garbage and recycling.
Right. And that was one of the main highlights of having PaleBlue dot attend the Sustainability Commission meeting is because we wanted to make sure that those survey questions were in line with those specific objectives.
Right.
Absolutely, and we know that that is a priority for the Commission to see increased recycling. I mean, we mentioned Mr. Rage, we've had those conversations, what are the barriers in the multifamily properties with recycling? Where we've had property owners very encouraged to have a recycling program, and it just wasn't meeting the needs for the residents, and then there were, and some issues that ended up being code compliance in nature.
Right. And I know that's true, I've heard of downtown businesses that their building owner does not provide recycling services. That said, I know that Elgin may or may not be an exception, but very little of the single-stream recycling in fact does, you know, for various reasons. I know it's an international marketplace, and single-stream isn't the best, and people don't, you know, don't follow the rules very well, they throw, I always say, I'm a perfect recycler, and I know what can go in, and I keep everything clean, but my neighbor now throws all their, you know, garbage on top of my clean recycling, so nobody's recycling gets taken in. So, I think one of the things, just as a thought to the rest of the council here in the community, we talked about, are there alternatives to single-stream recycling that might in fact provide a better recycling? And I know some communities have just decided not to recycle at all because the cost is high and the outcome is very small. Those are big questions, and I'm not expecting any answers, but just to say that Sustainability Commission had those types of discussions when we did this. We also thought about ways of saving money, you know, less pickups, ta-da, ta-da. And though I know you're probably not asking, as we just, you know, the survey's not going to discuss costs of anything.
Well, I would say, at the beginning of my speaking points, what I do know, so, it's been a privilege, this is my 10th year over here at City Hall from when I transitioned from my previous role. And when I came over to City Hall, I knew nothing about recycling. And I credit the efforts of staff, the Sustainability Commission, really the efforts of all of us collectively to get the message out there about the importance of recycling in our community. And I am very proud to say that with all the efforts that we have done over the course of at least my 10 years here at City Hall, we are leading. I mean, we have a leading police department, we have a leading fire department, we have leading snow piles, and we are leading the March for Recycling in our community, and I'm very proud of that. So, that's what I do know, and that's something that we don't want to take a step back from. And then I'll allow Erin to share some information with you on that.
Yeah, so, from some independent survey that we've done, and Tish, you can maybe corroborate with me, the national average household, household average for recycling is approximately 400 pounds per year. In Elgin, we recycle 500 pounds per year. So, that kind of shows that recycling is high on our priority list. I had a conversation with Councilwoman Powell last week about the difficulties of dual-stream recycling, right? There simply aren't any firms in the Chicago area that offer that. Now, if we want that service, and we want to pay so that they can double their fleet so that they can do dual-stream recycling, we can surely do that. One of the questions in the survey though, that came from the Sustainability Commission, one of the three that came from them, was if the city offered a place where you could take your recyclables and separate them, would you be interested in that? Because what we do know is, from a city, we probably have 90% of this community that want to take their garbage toters from the garage to the street and get them left. We do know that there's special interest groups that have heightened awareness around sustainability and recycling. So, one of the questions that came out of sustainability was, if the city was to offer a site where you can take your recyclables, where you can separate them, where plastics go here, glasses go here, paper go there, is that something you would be interested in, right? So, that's us kind of capturing a subsection to say, okay, if you want to do this, but it requires you to take this somewhere, you know, would you do that? And that would be information that if it comes back positively, we would have to include some provision within the RFP to make sure that our next provider provides that opportunity.
Well, yeah, I don't doubt that citizens in Elgin put their recycling, but it's all the wrong recycling, and they can't sort it, and it gets, you know, glass breaks and they can't recycle it, and cardboard is wet and it doesn't go anywhere. So, I'm saying, it's not our, it's, individuals, I think, in our community are all for recycling. It's, the whole system is not very efficient, I guess, and that goes from the plastic producers right on down. So, I'm just saying, that's a bigger picture, but it's something that we should all think about. Finally, I guess I will agree with Councilperson Powell, and I would also like to see the questions, you know, at the behest of the rest of the council before the survey goes out.
Thank you, Mayor. The question that I have is, I kind of remember that the city had a program where they were doing like a neighborhood at a time to educate them to recycle. Can you tell me a little bit about that, what happened to that? Because as far as I knew, that was working?
It still works today. It is the recycle, OptinRecycle program that was launched by WM. When we started that program in 2014, we went by route to see where there was a need for increased education on proper curbside recycling. And that is, if you recall, where we, you know, we would put the little toter hanger, like, you're doing a great job, smiley face, thanks for doing all the right things. And if you failed to meet those expectations of acceptable curbside recycling, you would get that little toter hanger that had the red frown on it, to remind you that like, hey, we're going to have to maybe take some corrective measures. There were homes in the community and still to this day that who may be unresponsive to our requests, where we have to have harder conversations with them of like, hey, you know, we noticed that when we dumped the load on your recycling, that there was a garden hose at the bottom, we saw it on the camera, so your address was marked. With the technology that WM currently has, we're able to go back and share pictures with the staff in 311s that we can continually educate. That program has not changed, it just became the model of weekly curbside recycling. And that would be the RORR program.
Okay, because I think people today are aware, and I think they want to help out, and I think that program helps. I had an incident where, I worked at before briefly, and we used to have toters where it was the recycle and regular waste, right? And I know a lot of my coworkers took a lot of pride of that recycle, when we clean out the buses, we need to put the plastic bottles in there. It was just sad that when they, when they went ahead and changed their contract, there was no recycling. And I thought that was kind of like a really big disservice, because we're talking about like maybe 300 and something vehicles. And that was just what affected our department. I can imagine the schools. That's something that I don't want to see. As far as the questions that you're going to ask, and I don't like to micromanage, but what I like about this, you said that if it's something that you might have to have a further survey, you know, I can understand that. To me, it doesn't matter. It does matter, but I think that it matters that you do your job and you guys would know what questions. So, to me, I'm the same on that. Thank you.
It's, just for the council, if the council's preference is to wait and take a look at the survey, that would delay us two weeks, because then you'd have to bring it back as an item on the next committee of the whole, so that everybody can see the questions and not have modifications made without the council looking at the questions. So, just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Ms. Powell.
Well, I guess, I don't think it would have to wait two weeks. We don't see the questions that are on there now. So, if we just had some time to see the questions and provide some feedback to staff, and we're given a timeline to do that, I mean, yes, it probably would be nice to see the final survey, but I don't think it has, it necessarily has to come back here to accomplish all of that.
How would you get, how would you get your comments back to everybody else?
Well, staff could incorporate, you know, based on the feedback that they got from us, they can incorporate what made sense and send it back out to all of us for feedback. feedback and, um, to, to, hey, this is, this is what we were able to incorporate, we appreciate the feedback, this is, you know, what's in the survey and this is, you know, how we're going to proceed. I mean, I, that's my opinion, I'm interested in what everyone else thinks, but I, I had a few other questions that, um, I thought about as, as you were talking. Kane County, as Councilwoman Rouschenberger mentioned, does have a ordinance requiring residential recycling be offered throughout the county. And as has been mentioned, some folks offer it, some folks don't. That was one of the main reasons why we incorporated the multifamily properties into the program to ensure that they did have recycling offered. And I know that, at least from some of the complaints that I remember getting, and I'm sure they probably haven't changed much, oh, I can get this done cheaper by another vendor. Well, what they're not telling you is that it doesn't include recycling service. So I know that that's one of the things that's come up. The, that's one question I have. The second question I have, is the intent to keep the program the same in terms of, um, billing residents for the service on our water bills? Or are we looking at having the vendor bill residents individually? Is that something we're exploring or, you know, potentially asking in the survey? Are we asking about alternative fuel vehicles? Kind of going to some of the sustainability initiatives. W, uh, Waste Management is currently using compressed natural gas vehicles, they're very quiet, um, that, you know, it's quite an investment on their part. Is that something that's important to, I know it's something that's important to the Sustainability Commission, is that something that's important to the residents as well? I think that's a valid question. In terms of the alternatives to single-stream, there really are no alternatives to single-stream. I guess my concern is that we're not, we're asking questions of people for stuff that we can't do. So if we're asking questions about having people bring their stuff to a drop-off center, that stuff is still going to go to a single-stream facility for sorting, so what's the point? I don't, we shouldn't give people the impression that just because they're bringing it and separating it at a recycling center, that it's going to be handled differently when it goes ultimately to a material recovery facility. So I'm just concerned about those kind of questions being asked of people and getting feedback and giving people the wrong impression about things that we can't really do or we can't really affect in the marketplace.
Right, and, and the Sustainable, Sustainability Commission, um, had a desire for us to incorporate alternatives to curbside. And though I don't disagree with you, what, one of the things that we do know is convenience is key. You know, if people have the opportunity to do something simple, like the At Your Door program, I mean, that is a hugely successful program. I understand that, you know, our vendor is not the only one who provides such service, but it is based on convenience for our residents. So there are, um, perhaps maybe some opportunities as we're going out, um, into the RFP creation to say like, what are the additional recycling needs, curbside? Because I think we know that we're going to be more successful if things are offered curbside, but how do we make it more effective? Like perhaps maybe, you know, different opportunities for Styrofoam. That one comes up quite a bit in my call centers, like, why don't we, aren't we able to? And, you know, what are the different opportunities there? So kind of like honing on in on like, what are the needs? If you want to do additional recycling and how can we meet those needs without driving up the cost? And then of course, the effectiveness of the recycling production as well.
Right, because, I mean, in terms of having people take stuff somewhere, it would be items that would be outside of the curbside collection program, like you mentioned, Styrofoam.
Right.
Great example, and I think I mentioned this to Erin when we talked, the Village of Mount Prospect, um, got a grant to, uh, purchase a Styrofoam densifier. So they offer the ability for people to bring Styrofoam to their public works department at set times, drop it off, they put it through this machine, because Styrofoam obviously is, is primarily air. It pulls all of, all of the air out of it and makes it into like a big hard brick and they, once they get a certain amount of those, then they're able to ship those to a, um, a facility that turns them into something else and recycles them. But those are the types of things I think we should be asking questions about in terms of what types of things that are not offered curbside, would you be willing to take somewhere else? Styrofoam, obviously, I think you mentioned the, the plastic grocery bags, maybe some other items, but I don't want, I, I would be very cautious about asking people to bring newspapers and, um, milk jugs to a place separated, thinking that it's going to be handled differently than the milk jugs and the newspapers that they put in their cart, because it's not.
You know, and as you are, are, are well aware that we do have a condition in our contract that Waste Management has to provide a drop-off collection every year. So in July, towards the end of the month of July, they, you know, open up their doors at the lip station and we afford that opportunity to residents. And, and on those, what, what we think we know, you know, is that even those numbers are decreasing from what it used to be because folks really just want that service at the curb. And, and so I, I respect that comment.
Do we have an idea of what percentage of the recycling that we're collecting is contaminated? Because I know that we, we just talked about the, the program, which actually went very well. Um, I think we took our contamination rate from what, like probably close to 40% and probably cut it close to, to half or even lower than that?
It started in the high end of 40% contamination rate with the success of the RORR program. We were down to less than 40%, uh, 14% contamination, but we did see during the pandemic that recycling struggled. I mean, we, we struggled as, as, as a nation with recycling. Um, and, and that, we saw an increase in a lot of things curbside during the pandemic. So I think it's fluctuated and, um, it's just a good reminder in which is why those engagement questions are included in the survey is, how do we get that information out to you? What is the best way for us to share that information with you? Um, because I am often surprised that we'll go and do a presentation somewhere or maybe unrelated to organics and recycling and, and waste and someone will be like, oh, I didn't know that, that program exists, or I, I didn't know. Um, so that is always a kind reminder to Erin and I to make sure that we are communicating what's available to our residents and alternate, uh, affordable means as well.
Hence, probably that specific question, are you aware that you can recycle food waste in a program that's offered? Are you aware that there's a senior discount? I think just even some of those basic awareness questions to, to gauge how much people know, I, I think is important, hence why I, it would be helpful to see the survey. So, um, appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Anything else? Okay, is there consensus that the council would like to look at the survey? All right, how about this is a proposal for you, we give us a week.
Right, uh, not two weeks, I was going to say.
Right, and give us a week and, uh, that, let council members review it and, uh, respond back to you and that would allow you to put it out, uh, next Wednesday.
Mr. Manager, in, in fairness, I, I believe if there is going to be this, this level of oversight and communication individually by council members that we are tasked with putting back together, that it may require us to come back to ensure that all of that information is included in, in the survey. That's, that's my perspective.
Let me ask you then, would you rather come back in two weeks and have this as an item on the agenda? The survey.
I mean, if that's the case, then we need to see the actual survey when you come back. It would have been nice, I thought we were going to see it tonight.
No, I, I understand, Councilwoman. I'm, I'm suggesting tomorrow morning we will share with this council the survey, um, to give everyone an opportunity to look at it and then in two weeks we could come back and discuss openly the changes that are going to be made. It, it just, it puts staff in a precarious situation.
Yes.
To receive emails individually from council members and not be able to have that dialogue or consensus from the council of, of what is included and what's not included. So our 21-question survey, based on probably our ability to, to want to include all of your feedback, it turned into a 40-question survey. So I just think in fairness to staff, um, that we would need to reconvene to ensure that after your review, we are in line with what the survey is going to look like.
Sure.
All right. If that's the request, I think that's, uh, I think that's more than fair and, uh, we'll expect you back in two weeks at the next committee of the hall.
All right, Ms. Phillips will email the survey out tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys will have it in your inbox tomorrow and then we will discuss it in two weeks at your pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have to get through the fireworks issue tonight because it's on the second agenda as well.
Just introduce it, okay, fine, all right.
Yeah, it's Committee of the Hall and it's on the second agenda for a vote, so.
Yep. Okay, so, Item B, computer wakes up again. Uh, item on both agendas, as you said, Mayor, sorry. The Amendment to the Elgin Municipal Code Regarding Fireworks Possession, Sale, and Use. Again, this item is on both agendas so that it could be adopted if the council is so inclined at the end of this meeting. The Police Department is seeking to amend the current fireworks city ordinance to add a grad, to add a graduated penalty scale. The current ordinance allows for, um, any section of the ordinance upon conviction to be punishable by fines of not less than $100 nor more than $750. Police Department is seeking to enhance the current fines with a graduated penalty scale along with requiring persons to appear in court for all citations to allow for more enhanced accountability measures. Um, encourage compliance, ultimately reduce the use of fireworks in the city. In a nutshell, when, uh, where the maximum penalty was once $750 on the third or fourth violations, that could be increased to up to $1,500. First violation is a counseling, second violation is 150 minimum, 750 maximum, third violation, 500 minimum, 1,500 maximum, fourth violation, 1,500 minimum and maximum. And we can discuss that at greater length. Chief Lally is here to, um, just answer any questions from the council.
Okay, questions for Chief Lally or the manager at this time? There's not a vote required at this time, but Mr. Ortiz?
Oh, okay.
That's for, uh, the chief. I actually have two. One we already talked about and then there's another one. Uh, under next steps, you have a provide education to the community regarding the amendment ordinance inclusive to social media campaigning or campaign. You can do more than just social media, right?
Correct, yes. We had a, um, an email exchange regarding, um, that question, so thank you for the question. Um, yes, we will, um, do a social media campaign. Um, I'll also, if the ordinance is passed this evening, speak about it on, uh, my Friday radio show. Additionally, uh, reach out to community groups and then also on top of that, starting on the 19th through the 24th, we will be doing walking talks in areas where we have, uh, from last year, calls, high calls for service for fireworks. And so, um, going in those neighborhoods and handing out flyers in both English and Spanish to advise of the ordinance, um, so that way that people are not taken off guard. Additionally, um, if the ordinance is passed and the fines are increased, um, and in order to allow the community a period of adjustment, that first violation will be a warning unless there's something that's extremely egregious. So there's also a, a buffer in place, um, should we not, um, reach certain people due to, you know, our efforts.
Okay, and the second one is the wording, the word court. Do you guys use that because individuals know that court's coming to answer for your mistakes instead of using adjudicating here, adjudication hearing?
Are you, are you asking about a citation for them to appear in court? Why we're asking that? Yes, so, um, the adjudication court, especially with the first violation, because the minimum is a counseling that we can give, which would be, you know, we'll have to figure that out with our adjudication court. But it also allows us to have the conversation about, hey, this is the second or third time that we've been issuing citations for fireworks. So it allows for a little bit more accountability, also, um, spurs the conversation to let people know that the ordinance is there, that it's illegal, that your neighbors are calling and complaining, that we have a high level of fireworks. So it allows us to have a, a little bit more say in what actually happens on the end.
I think you misunderstood my question. It's, why do you use the word court instead of adjudication hearing?
Are you asking, that's just for, an easier way for people to understand.
Okay, that's, that's pretty much it.
Yes, yeah, so I think at one point I say adjudication hearing, adjudication court. It's just an easier way for people to understand that they actually have to go somewhere.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
But it is adjudication.
Correct.
Okay, anything else?
Just, I think it was implied, but I just want to make sure, the intent is to have it done for this 4th of July.
Correct, yes, that's why I asked, uh, for it to be both on, both agendas, because additionally, we start, um, we do a lot to try to curtail firework complaints, which is listed in the, in the memo. And our firework detail will start on Friday, so we'd like to have it in place for the officers to be able to have, um, something that they can use.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
To move the second to adjourn, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rouschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned, we'll reconvene at the, uh, regular council meeting at 7:15 and then we'll come back and finish up the committee of the hall.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:15, and then we'll come back and finish up the Committee of the Whole.[364.21]
observations are held throughout the nation and June 19th is a symbolic date, offering an opportunity to reflect on the tragic loss of black lives and the persistent racial inequalities in our society. It also encourages us to build community and have open dialogue and respect for all cultures while representing African-American freedom, equal rights, and unity in the United States. Now therefore, on behalf of David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, I do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023 as Juneteenth in the City of Elgin, and we shall salute all organizations, including the African-American Coalition of King County, in their praiseworthy missions to raise awareness for equal justice, dignity, rights, and opportunities for all, celebrating our community's continual progress and commitment towards eliminating racial inequities.
Thank you all so very much. My name is Shirley Bassett. I'm the president of the African-American Coalition of King County. I've been the president since 2019, so I am honored to be able to bring Juneteenth to, well, not to Elgin, Gertrude did that actually, so I'm just stepping in. So I'm grateful to be able to continue bringing Juneteenth to Elgin, and I would like to thank everybody for their support and for just helping us, you know, to make sure that our day, Juneteenth, is actually recognized. And so I'd like to thank Mayor Captain, the councilmen, and all the city council representatives. Tish Powell has helped us out a lot, and so we'd like to thank her so much for her time and her dedication to helping us put Juneteenth on. Okay, and also we have our committee, so see if they want to have a word.
How much time do we have? No, I'm joking, I'm joking. Usually I wouldn't speak. Everyone knows my preference for being behind these beautiful cameras. Hi. Hello there. Yeah, so just a few things. I'm not going to read my entire remarks because I don't want to be here long. I don't know if I should look at you all or the camera. It feels weird. But for the first of my remarks, I just want to correct a few things unfortunately about Juneteenth. As we all know, when the soldiers marched to Galveston under General Granger to proclaim the freedom, what we don't often talk about is the Buffalo soldiers that were with them. So the army was becoming increasingly black at that stage. That's of course why the North won the Civil War. So there were a lot of black soldiers that were there going through the town to physically enforce the freedom of their brother. That's why it didn't happen until 1865, because the army had to be there to enforce the freedom. So, just so we're clear on that. And other than that, yeah. Greetings, everybody. Thank you for all your work, especially council members that I know, and I look forward to Mr. Ortiz's work in the future. And Washington buddy, doing a good job. Sorry, I know everybody here, so I feel a little comfortable. I'm going to keep going. Let's see, what else? Oh, last thing. Just to remind everybody that Juneteenth is only one of many rituals that our people created to observe, celebrate, and commemorate moments when they achieved through struggle freedom in the Western Hemisphere. The cousins of Juneteenth in this hemisphere would be Emancipation Day in Caribbean in August, between the 1st and the 4th, because many Africans in the Caribbean won their independence in the 19th century, starting with Haiti, of course, in 1804, then Trinidad and Tobago and Jamaica in 1838. To show the connection between America and other Western Hemisphere where the Africans were, there's an emancipation park in Houston, and there's also an emancipation park in Kingston, Jamaica. So we're always connected, and let's keep that in mind. Other than that, thank you. I appreciate you having out. I look forward to everybody showing up, and this is for the people, Saturday, 11 to 11. We're going to have a whole Kid Zone Beer Garden, fun and entertainment for all. Come on out, Festival Park, bring the family, bring the friends. This is not just for Africans to celebrate, this is for everyone to celebrate. So come on out, don't just stay in the morning, stay till the whole night. A lot of Europeans left early last time. You were there, you knew. So, other than that, just come out, have fun, and thank you. Any questions, direct them to the council members.
Okay, that brings us to the portion for public comments, and now that Denise Hademan sat down, she can get back up.
What Jeremy and Shirley said, but that isn't, those aren't my comments. Good evening, everybody. I first want to say, and I want to commend the organizers of Elgin's First Pride Celebration. That was a weekend to remember. It was wonderful. I'm hoping that folks were able to be at the parade and at the festival that followed. I bring up pride because a question that surfaced among the organizers was, why doesn't Elgin fly the pride flag? And so some folks asked me, and I said, well, you know what? I'm not a member, I don't work for the city, I'm not on city council, but I'm certainly comfortable in going and asking the city council to consider flying the flag, flying the pride flag during the month of June. We are, we talk about how inclusive and accepting and welcoming we are, and we are that. One of the ways that we express our inclusivity and our diversity is by recognizing the symbols of various cultures, ethnicities, and communities. So I'm asking the city council to please consider adopting some kind of rule or ordinance that would allow the flying of flags at city hall that would represent pride, our LGBTQ+ community, our Hispanic community, our Polish community, our Asian-American Pacific Islander community, our African-American community. We are a diverse, diverse community, and I believe that we should recognize all of us, and a way we can do that is through the symbol of a country's flag. So thank you. And I don't know how you start doing this. So do you want me to start a petition? Because I can certainly do that and bring that back. Do you want city staff to start a petition?
Process would be that two members of the city council could ask that it be put on the committee the whole and brought forward for a vote, discussion and a vote.
So I'll be in touch.
There we go. We have some representatives from the new citizens' recognition committee here.
Good evening, everyone, council members and Mayor Captain. We are just here as a reminder, I know you've already been, oh, let me introduce myself. I'm Rose Diaz, I'm with the YWCA Elgin.
Hi, I'm Annie from the YWCA Elgin.
Good evening, I'm Carolina from Chinese Mutual Association.
And as Mayor Captain already said, we're part of the new recognition, citizens' recognition committee. And so we're here just to invite you all. I think Jeanette might have already sent a few emails and reminders. I know some councilman members are coming and attending, and Mayor Captain, but we wanted to remind you it's next Tuesday at 7:00. The Heritage Ballroom, and we really would love it if everyone could attend. There's going to be music, food, drinks, and celebration, and Annie will be our speaker.
Yeah, and also, we are recognizing members of citizens of Elgin.
We are recognizing citizens of Elgin from various countries, Mexico, El Salvador, Ecuador, Guatemala, Dominican Republic, Colombia, Thailand, and Laos. So please join us if you can.
And then, my speech is about the struggles of an immigrant being raised here in the U.S. So I'm so excited to tell my story with you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to bids. The first item is bid number 23-029, light fixtures.
I move to award this contract to Wolf Electric Supply to provide light fixtures and light controls in the amount of $121,050.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 2 is bid number 23-031, contractual winter services within cul-de-sacs and alleys.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we award this bid to Great Lakes Snow Systems in the amount of $28,498.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 4 is bid number 23-033, water heater replacement.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we award this contract to RJ O'Neill Incorporated in the amount of $148,100.
Second.
Moved the second and any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 4 is a job order contract with FH Passion for exterior repairs to the Lord's Park Pavilion.
Move to award this FH Passion in the amount of $833,033.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 6 is a job order contract with FH Passion for masonry repairs.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we award this to FH Passion in the amount of $131,211.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Item 7 is a tips cooperative agreement amendment number 1 with Ion Wave Technologies 5 Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we award this contract to Ion Wave Technologies for the amount of $71,250.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 3 is bid number 23-032, contractual winter services for city-owned and maintained parking lots.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to award this bid to also to Great Lakes Snow Systems in the amount of $99,000.
Second.
Moved the second and any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 3 is an ordinance amending the penalty and provisions of Chapter 10.31 of the Elgin Municipal Code entitled Fireworks Possession, Sale, and Use.
Moved for approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Miscellaneous business.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, June 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, June 28, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. You entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Moved the second to adjourn, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Other business. First item is a resolution authorizing execution of a sales agreement with the Genoa-Kingston Fire Protection District for the sale of surplus emergency portable radios.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 3 is an ordinance amending the penalty and provisions of Chapter 10.31 of the Elgin Municipal Code entitled Fireworks Possession, Sale, and Use.
Moved for approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item 3 is an ordinance amending the penalty and provisions of Chapter 10.31 of the Elgin Municipal Code entitled Fireworks Possession, Sale, and Use.
Moved for approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, June 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, June 28, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. You entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Moved the second to adjourn, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Moved the second to reconvene, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item D is the proposed design and engineering services agreement with Upland Design Limited for the Mulberry Grove Park renovation. Mulberry Grove was built in 2005 and is located in the city's southwest side. Mulberry Grove Park services the Mulberry Grove subdivision is the only park in that area. The 18-year-old playground is in poor condition, and many of the elements have been removed due to inability to find replacement parts. The proposal from Upland encompasses architectural and engineering services, bid assistance, and construction management. With compliance constraints in the playground equipment industry, this project will be started in the summer of 2023, but will not be completed until next spring.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Ortiz?
Mr. Manager, I think this park was one of the ones on, one of the community events I went to. When are the other parks going to get done for the recommendations of like changes or updates that they had over at the rec center a couple of months ago?
I mean, so there is, there is a whole series, every year, Mr. Hulkey presents a proposal as part of the budget and decision package, a list of all of the parks that need repairs. And it's simply a matter of triaging, for lack of a better term, which projects need the most work. There is no shortage of improvements that I would be able to recite at this time. I could go back and find out what is being proposed, or I could go back and provide the council with what parks are being completed this year and try to get advance word as to what Mr. Hulkey's going to be proposing next year. But I remember during last year's decision package, there was something close to 20 parks, if not more, that were being recommended for improvements, and we were only able to hit a little bit less than half of those. Because you see, when you see big numbers like this $40,000, some of them go upwards of $100,000, it's there. I'd have to get specific information on the parks that people are looking for to know what the timeframe is for when they're expected to be done, but we're plowing through it.
All right, thanks. Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Just a question. This is a very nice park, there's a lot of space. It's one of the few parks that has, I can't remember if it's a half-court basketball court or a full-court basketball court. Is that going to remain there with the addition of the pickle, are the pickleball courts being added, or is that basketball court going away?
It's being added. Councilmember, obviously, you've looked at the memo, you've seen the extensive outreach that the Parks and Recreation Department did with the neighbor, with the residents that are serviced by this park to go along with the improvements. So, yes, six dedicated pickleball courts adjacent to the existing tennis courts, as it says, are being added to the existing facilities.
Got it, just making sure. And I'm sure all of the pickleball people will be extremely glad to have their pickleball courts at Mulberry Grove.
Maybe. Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item E, change order number 1 to the Phase 2 LED Streetlight Conversion Project. The city awarded a contract in December 2022 to Electrical Resource Management for the purchase of about 2,600 LED retrofit light fixtures that are to be installed with as part of the city's Phase 2 LED Streetlight Conversion Project. The change order materials that's before the council today is seeking approval for the purchase of 193 luminaire housings that were found to be incompatible with the retrofit light fixtures. Just for context, Phase 2 contemplates replacing 2,600 lights, and it wasn't until we got into the field that we found out that just under 200 of those aren't going to fit the LED lights that were purchased.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item F is a purchase agreement with Dom Mechanical Industries for lime and soda ash piping replacement at the Riverside Water Treatment Plant. Riverside uses 11 different chemicals that are added at different points during the water treatment process, two of those which are lime and soda ash. that just under 200 of those aren't going to fit the LED lights that were purchased.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item F is a purchase agreement with Dom Mechanical Industries for lime and soda ash piping replacement at the Riverside Water Treatment Plant. Riverside uses 11 different chemicals that are added at different points during the water treatment process, two of those which are lime and soda ash. They're provided as a dry granular compound that is then blown through piping into the storage bins, which are located on the roof of the Riverside Water Treatment Plant. Because of the abrasive nature of this material, the piping that is fed through is subject to deterioration. Once the pipe develops even a small hole, it becomes unusable due to the high pressure required to move the product through the pipe. The repair, excuse me, the repairs required to fix the holes are dangerous, being located on the roof because of the location, yet they must be performed immediately because of the volume of the lime that the treatment plant uses on a daily basis. The piping's been repaired multiple times during recent years and now requires entire replacement. City's recommending the contract with Dom Mechanical, which has completed this work in the past to effectuate these repairs.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item G is a resolution approving the recipients for the 2023 Historic Architecture Rehabilitation Grant Program. This program provides incentives to owners of residential property to offset the cost of exterior rehabilitation work. The 50/50 component covers half the cost of exterior work done to eligible properties in an amount up to $20,000. The 75/25 component covers 75% of the cost for work up to $20,000 for low and moderate income households. This year, the city received 14 applications, with six of the top-scoring projects being recommended for funding. Two applicants did not meet submission requirements. Four of the awards are under the 50/50 component, and two of the awards are under the 75/25 component. Architectural rehabilitation grants in the more distant past were funded through riverboat revenue. But in recent years, funding for this program has been split between the Central Area TIF Fund and the General Fund, $50,000 from each of those funding sources. With only two of the top-scoring applicants being from properties located within the TIF, the remaining four top-scoring projects require an additional allocation from the General Fund totaling $76,250. With that extra $26,250 coming from the General Fund, the $26,250 is being returned to the TIF for use. That's it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Stefan?
Just a question. Seeing the memo and reading it last week, there's five properties that didn't have funds available. Will they be eligible next year? Will they have to reapply? Will they just automatically be in the mix for the next round?
I don't know, but Mark Malat is here and will be able to do that. My guess is that there'll probably be another application process, but he'll be able to confirm that. I don't want to assume that it's automatically rolled, rolled over. There he is.
Yes, you might be able to.
There he is. I believe they have to reapply as a past heritage commissioner.
Okay.
When I have the certainty that we need, can hold off on that rather than committing to something that may not be right. Thank you, Mr. Malat.
My pleasure. Good evening, council members. We would ask them to reapply, but it would be largely using the same information from last year, so we would not expect...
Just kind of a confirmation they're still interested.
Absolutely. And we will reach out to those people too as we near the next funding cycle.
Got it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?